Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is almost the witching hour. It is the 15th of April, Tax Day 2019. We have a meeting of the State and City Council, and the venerable Timex says it's 7:00 o'clock, so let's go to work. Please join me in a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and welcome. Let's see, the whole council is here, staff is here, public works director is off at a, what, a meeting, training?
Training conference.
Not here. Okay. Uh, let's see. Are there any additions to the agenda? I don't hear any. Declarations of ex-party contact, contact, conflicts of interest, bias, anything?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
When it comes time for the public hearing on the zoning map amendment for 1160 East Jefferson, I'm gonna abstain. I think, just as everyone knows, Mr. Humphries is a good family friend of ours, and I just don't want to give any kind of false premise, so I'm gonna abstain from voting.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd also like to declare, I've been to that residence several times, just passing it. I've looked over it once or twice, noticed the sign, it shouldn't influence my vote tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would like to disclose that I have been down that street, and I passed that residence, and possibly even knocked on their door during campaigning, so, but it won't influence my vote.
I have not even looked down that street.
Do you know where that street is?
I present to the audience, "Clean as the driven snow." Thank you, folks. No, that's, no, that's good. This is all, this is what we need to do, so that we're above most, most criticism, not all, but most. Okay, um, let's see. Presentations, comments from the public. John Mesa. We're gonna have Deanna Ferris in a minute, but this is the one green slip tonight, so John, come and share with us. Oh, here comes another one. That's fine. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm John Mesa with Moxie Berry, North Third Avenue, also a resident of Staton. What I'm responding to is, one, the positive comment for the new ordinances changing with the food trucks for the streets, so I'm for the change. However, I think we should take more time to deliberate on the change for North Third Avenue with the restrictions of North Third, and maybe come up with a better plan for Third Avenue. And that's why I have on my box, I'm for and oppose. I am opposed for daytime food trucks on North Third, but I am for evening activities for the businesses that are coming into North Third, to have them have the ability, be able to utilize our food trucks for special events and things for them. So, I'd like us to see, or I'd like to see some more planning going into North Third Avenue, knowing all that goes into that, the complexity of it all. So, that's my comment on that.
Okay, thank you, John.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, John. Mr. Fleischman, is that a new, he raising a new concern, a new question?
Mr. Mesa and I have had conversation, I believe that he may have also had a conversation with the police chief. So, it's not new to me, but it is new to council, because council has not yet discussed this item.
Okay. Is that something that's coming to us?
It is on your agenda for later this evening.
Later this evening? Well, hell, that's coming to us, isn't it? Okay. Thank you. Amending licensing standards for mobile food units. There it is. Okay. Chris Klein.
Hello. I'm horrible at this, but my name is Chris Klein, part of Snow Peak Brewing Company. My residence is in Almsville, Sublimity, pretty much, but I'm here for the food truck thing also. I didn't know what to write, 'cause, yeah, I didn't know, I just found out about this this morning, so I was like trying to scramble to get off work. We are trying to do the same thing with the amending of the code, I guess it would be called, trying to get food trucks to be able to park in front of Snow Peak with their window on the sidewalk side, not blocking any traffic or any pedestrian right-of-way, for the reasons of safety for our patrons to have to walk across the street, to the parking lot, wherever we would have to get them to park. It's a safety aspect for the people, it's a safety aspect for people that are coming, so they can grab something to eat and a beer, and not, you know, we all know food and beer is a lot better than just a beer, so, trying to, trying to encourage responsibility, well, that would help with having a food truck available for people to get some kind of a snack or a meal, or also for kids, you know, 'cause we're gonna be open to families. So, yeah, that's, that's why I'm here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chris. All right. Anything else? No more green slips. State and Public Library Foundation, Ms. Ferris, would you like to make, do a presentation this evening?
It's hard to follow food trucks when you're the library, but, no, it's my pleasure, on behalf of the State and Public Library Foundation, to present our annual gift to the city in support of the State and Public Library. This year, we're presenting a check, and I've discussed this with Mr. Campbell, and we're presenting a check for $6,500 to be used at the city's discretion and support the library operations. We also have agreed for the upcoming fiscal year, so 2019, '20, to please be invited to include us in your budget. We'd like to present the same gift this time next year as well. We'll certainly set our goals for that. And we are committed to, again, support the Outreach Storyteller Program, fully funded at, I think it's $24,000, so we will continue to support that program. And we're just really, really grateful for the partnership that we have with Jana, in particular, I'd like to point that out, with Jana and her team make our job fun and easy. I feel like we're there to serve our city employees, but it always feels like the other way around. So, you've got a great team at the library, and we really appreciate that. And in closing, the ways that we are able to raise this money for the library are kind of threefold, but, so we have some events, we have donors in the community that commit to give to us annually, and we also seek some grant funding from foundations. Our fundraising efforts in the last two years have centered around some events, one of which we had in January, which was the Brews Bites &amp; Books. Several of you were there, and I thank you for that. And one of our most popular ones is the Father Daughter Ball, which is coming up in May. So, we have lots of support from the community, from businesses that sponsor that event. We expect over 300 fathers and daughters from the community to come. It's a partnership with a high school to let us use the facility. We just love your support for helping us sell tickets, get the word out, to thank and support our community partners that come back year after year, Summit Cleaning, I could probably stumble and forget someone without having my script, but Summit Cleaning is our premier sponsor for our slumber company, Sigment Excavation, Allied Rock, SETC, mm, yep, Moxie Berry is coming in this year. We're also really proud to announce that we're partnering with the Staton Teen Center, Saniam Teen Center? Yes. So, we're sharing the responsibility for the event and some of the fundraising efforts in order to really broaden our scope and just further step out as a community-wide event for the Father, Saniam Canyon Father Daughter Ball. So, if you see us on Facebook, like us. If you have daughters, granddaughters, nieces, anyone that you think would be interested in going, please help us spread the word. It's for ages, I think we say five to 18. I try to go every year, but I'm too old, so I just get to, I just get to help plan, but we're really grateful for your support, and thanks for all the service that you guys do, and all the hours you put in, the city council and city employees. We appreciate it. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Thank you very much. Okay. Uh, that's it for that. Let's look at the consent agenda this evening, folks, and see what we have to do with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Motion to accept and a second, thank you. You know, this, and the purpose of the consent agenda, it says that the recorder will poll council members individually, and I always just ask for a yes or no. Alyssa, would you like to poll the council on consent agenda?
Sure. I'd be happy to.
And the motion is to approve it as presented?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, since that's what's written.
Counselor Mullin?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Okay, thank you. And we go right now to a public hearing on a zoning map amendment, 1160 East Jefferson Street. And I have to read a thing, and most of you heard this probably maybe lots of times. Uh, let's see. Good evening, my name's Hank Porter, and mayor of Staton, I'll be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for a public hearing in the matter of land use file number 2-02/19, an application to change the zoning designation from low-density residential to medium-density residential at 1160 East Jefferson Street. The hearing is now open. Oregon land use law requires a statement be made to those in attendance that covers certain matters relative to this case. That statement with all the information required to be presented under the Oregon Revised Statutes 197.763 (5) is printed and available at the back counter. If you have not yet received one of these forms, you should go get one and review it prior to presenting your testimony. If anyone has any questions regarding anything on the statement, or objects to it not being read out loud, please raise those questions when it comes your turn to speak during the hearing. Also at the back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing, the Planning Commission's Rules of Procedure for Land Use Public Hearings, and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You're encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was sent in this case. I hear none. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case. I hear none. If there are any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party contact, oh, are there any, by members of this body, and those have already been declared, so we are ready for the-
They should be declared as part of the record for this hearing.
Okay.
Since you've now banged the gavel to open the hearing.
Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party contact, or bias by any members of this body?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Once again, I will abstain from voting on this hearing due to the fact that I consider Mr. Humphries close, personal friends of the family.
Okay.
I will again declare my ex-party contact, or not contact, but site visits, where I have looked at the residence, and also, apparently we were also campaigning in that area. I don't remember going to that house, but, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to declare that I have definitely been by the house, and I believe I campaigned at that house as well.
Okay.
Looking at the property where it is.
Anyone else? Okay. We are now ready for the staff introduction. Mr. Dan.
Thank you.
Dan.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. The issue before you this evening is a public hearing on an application to amend the city's official zoning map for the property at 1160 East Jefferson. The application requests you change the zoning from low-density residential to medium-density residential. The Planning Commission held a hearing on this at their, when was that, their March meeting, and forwarded it to you with a recommendation. After we hear the applicant's presentation, I'll have a little bit more detail in my staff report.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. All right, so applicant presentation. Mr. Humphries.
Counsel, Tad Humphries. I own the property at 1160 East Jefferson Street. I haven't owned it for a long period of time, but the property was built as a duplex in 1949, and I just thought that I wanted it to be zoned correct for what it's being used for versus having it a non-conforming use. So, that's kinda all I have for presentation. I don't have a slideshow for you or anything like that.
It's got a duplex on it now. Is there room for another one?
You'd have to talk to Dan about that.
I don't know that that's necessarily a concern, just a, just a question, but that's fine, that's all I've got. Anyone else? Questions at this point? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ted. Staff report.
So, as I said in the introduction, the property is currently zoned low-density residential. It is a 15,000-square-foot lot with a duplex that was built well before the city of Staton had zoning, and it has been a legally existing non-conforming use since we adopted the zoning code sometime in the 1970s. To answer the mayor's question to the applicant, the lot is large enough under medium-density zoning that should the duplex be removed, the lot could be partitioned into two 7,500-square-foot lots, or a 7,000 and then 8,000-square-foot lot, and each of those lots could have a duplex on it. But there's probably not room to build another duplex on the lot with the way the lot is developed currently, with the existing house being right smack in the middle of the lot. So, it could take some creative design, perhaps, if someone wanted to, but it would also mean removing the existing structure. You've got in your packet the application submitted by the applicant, which includes a, the analysis required by the Transportation Planning Rule of the impacts of this potential zoning change on the city's transportation system. The conclusions of that analysis are that the zone change and the potential development that could result from the zone change is not expected to have a significant impact on surrounding roadways and infrastructure. It is an existing, legally existing, non-conforming use. Changing the zoning to medium-density would mean the duplex would be a conforming use. You've got before you the recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission, and you've got a draft of ordinance 1030, which includes a set of recommended findings of fact and conclusions that the seven criteria for approval of a zoning map amendment have been addressed by the application, and would be approved. I can answer any questions you have before we turn it over to public testimony.
Mr. Fleischman, I know this is, this seems even a little strange to me, but things change. Mr. Humphries could go back, let's say this is downzoned, upzone, what is it, up, down?
Up.
Sideways? Upzone to multifamily. He could still go back, tear down that duplex, and put two single-family homes there, couldn't he? 7,000 square foot?
Yes, so-
I mean, let's say that's not-
If the duplex, if the duplex was removed, and the lot was partitioned, now the lot only has, I think it only has 100 feet of frontage on East Jefferson, so it would need to be a front and back partitioning, it couldn't be side by side.
Okay.
But, but if you go through a theoretical, the lot's large enough to be partitioned under medium-density zoning into two lots that exceed 7,000 square feet, and under our code today, each of those lots could be developed with either a single-family home or a duplex.
Or a duplex, right.
So, the, quote, worst-case scenario for development under the medium-density zoning for this property would be two duplexes for a total of four dwelling units.
And that, that probably makes the most economic sense, but that's just the idea that you can go, you can go back, even with that upzone.
Yeah, the, the medium-density zoning that, that he's asked for would allow a single-family home, in addition to allowing the duplex.
And if he was-
The other alternative would be to keep it as one lot, and the code would allow a triplex on that lot.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah. Why ask for it to be upzone if you were gonna build single-family stuff on it? Anyway, enough of that. Somebody else? Go ahead, please.
Um, Dan, so, would the trips only go up then if, if that were the scenario where they were to build the two duplexes? Because at this point, because it says that the trips could go up by 25 trips a day, but if they're, if it's already a duplex, the amount of trips per day is not changing.
Right. So, so, correct. The Transportation Planning Rule, which is a state administrative rule that dictates our analysis whenever we change our zoning map or our comprehensive plan map, requires that this analysis that was done not be done based on what the applicant says they're going to do, but what is the worst-case scenario that could happen after you change the zoning. And so, that's why I tried to describe what I saw as the, the, quote, worst case, not that there's good or bad about it, but it is the most intense development that would be allowed under medium-density zoning, would be to get rid of the existing duplex, partition the lot into two, and build a duplex on each of the two new lots, which would result in two additional dwelling units besides what's there now. And that's what the analysis that was submitted is based on also. And the conclusion of that traffic engineer was, doing that would not have a substantial impact on the transportation system.
Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Mr. Mayor, um, Dan, if we were to change the zone to the medium-density residential, are they allowed to add an additional ADU to this lot as it stands?
No, our code for ADUs only allows accessory dwelling units to be placed on a lot with a single-family home.
So, if they did tear it down and do two single-family homes, then they could do ADUs? Okay.
Right.
Which is essentially like a duplex.
But they could also do two duplexes and have two full-size units instead of just an, an ADU.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Other questions from the council? Anything? Anything? Let's go to public testimony. Who would like to comment on this proposal at this time? Be brave. No one? Okay. Let's go back to questions from the council, then. Anything? Applicant summary. Mr. Humphries.
You guys have discussed this, I don't have much to say.
Okay, all right.
I'm not planning on tearing it down. I'm building another duplex.
Well, the-
I just want the zone changed.
Sure.
Point of order?
Yeah.
Can he go up to the mic?
Yeah. He can do that.
I, I just want the zone changed to, to make it right. It is what it is, and it's been that way since 1949 when it was built, and, and if it had happened to burn down tomorrow, it's like, no, I bought it as a duplex, I didn't buy it as two single-family lots to build a house or anything like that back. I just want it correct. To where, okay, it burns down tomorrow, I can build another duplex back there and, and be fine. So, that, that was my whole intentions behind getting the zone changed.
Super, thank you. Yeah. Okay. Let's see, where were we before we got? Staff summary. Dan?
So, the Planning Commission has recommended approval. You've got their order recommending that in your packet. Staff's recommendation is approval. And staff has presented you with three different options. One, to approve the application and the ordinance as drafted. Second is approve the application with modifications to the ordinance, and the third would be to deny the ordinance, deny the application, which would mean directing staff to come back with some, some alternate findings and conclusions to support that decision.
Okay, good. All right. Is that, is that it, Dan?
That's it for me.
Okay, let's go ahead and close the hearing, then, and we'll go to council deliberation. So, go ahead, folks, anything? We got, you heard the, the options and motions, motions and options. What would we like to do?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application of Tad Humphries and Scott Humphries, the land use file number 1-02/19, and ordinance 1030 as presented. Second.
So, that, approve that application and the first consideration of ordinance 1030.
Yes.
Motion and a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Of course. Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Abstaining.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Mullin?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Motion passes 4 to 0.
4 to 1, actually. Okay, then, so you don't have to remind me?
No.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Nor do I need to stop you.
Which you usually do, huh-huh. Okay. Closing statement. The city council's decision may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals within 21 days in accordance with the Oregon Revised Statutes 197.830. Okay. No unfinished business tonight. New business, a joint presentation with Planning Commission on draft transportation system plan. Mr. Fleischman.
I will be very brief, and I'm just here to introduce Susan Wright, who's an engineer with Kittleson Associates, and Darcy, whose last name I'm forgetting, Ruzinski, with the Angelo Planning Group. They are the lead consultants in our efforts to update the transportation system plan. You may recall that back in, when were we here, early February, we had a sort of progress report presentation. We're back with a second, a second show and tell. Getting the light, Rich? Thank you.
Can I have a few copies with me of the full document? It was, where should I hand these to? Ask Alex.
Is it in there?
It was on your electronic packet, if anybody wants a personal hard copy, if you
All right. Good evening. And yes, lovely new projector.
Readable tonight.
Yes.
It actually focuses.
All right. Um, yeah, my name is Suzie Wright. I'm with Kittleson and Associates, and it's been my pleasure working with- pleasure working with your city staff and the technical and citizen advisory committees that were assembled for this project. I can get the next slide, please. And my presentation tonight, I'm going to try to be pretty, go a little quickly, I have about 10 or 12 slides, just to kind of give you an update since the last time I was here. Last time I was here, I gave you an update on the, kind of where we were at in the alternatives analysis stage, but we had some pretty good idea of what was going into the plan. So there's not been a great number of changes since that last briefing, but I'll try to highlight what some of those changes are. And then I'm going to pass the mic over to Darcy Rozinski from Angelo Planning Group, and she's going to talk about some of the things that ultimately will be in your adoption packet along with this document when it comes before you for adoption. When adopting the TSP, there's a few things that also need to be adopted to fully implement it, and so that will take the form of some amendments to the comprehensive plan to bring the goals, policies, and objectives into alignment in the transportation section of your comprehensive plan with the updated TSP. And then there's a few amendments to the development code to make sure that any of the updated policies and goals are kind of reflected in the development code. So Darcy is going to talk about those items, and that is probably new material to use since the last briefing. So I will try to be kind of brief in my re-review of what's in the TSP document. Next slide, please. So just a little recap on our schedule, we started this process a little bit more than a year ago, so it's been a pretty nice-paced project, and I'm happy to be here. And the next steps moving forward from today, we will welcome any of your questions and comments on the document, and then ultimately it will be coming before the planning commission for an adoption hearing in May, and then hopefully before the council in June. Next slide, please. So the TSP is organized in a series of chapters, starting with an introduction followed by goals, objectives, and evaluation criteria, and that's the chapter that's primarily, Darcy will be talking about getting into alignment with the goals and policies in the comprehensive plan, and it also includes some of the evaluation criteria and the things that we were looking at in the transportation system to make sure that we were implementing the goals and objectives. Then the plan is broken up into modal chapters, with a chapter for the pedestrian plan, bicycle plan, transit plan, motor vehicle plan, a chapter that covers a few other modes, such as kind of water, for example, and water for transportation. And then there's a chapter on kind of funding, implementation, and monitoring, and a glossary of terms. Next slide, please. So just kind of a few highlights in the pedestrian plan. So the pedestrian plan includes identification of existing and future sidewalks, and one of the items that was new since the briefing was the addition of crosswalk study locations. These are locations where we either saw the need or received comments through the public participation on the need for crosswalks, and these are identified in the TSP as kind of potential crosswalk study locations. We think they're all good locations, you probably wouldn't do this full number on First Avenue, but really before implementing a crosswalk, each one needs its own, a little bit more in-depth study, in particular looking into the warrants for what type of treatment would be best at that location. This chapter was also updated to just kind of note that ADA, so curb ramps and accessibility is an important part of the pedestrian system, the TSP doesn't include an inventory of all the city's existing curb ramps or their status as far as being up to standard, but it does note that they're an important part of the overall system. Through the, this final phase of the project, we got a lot of feedback on phasing and priorities, and one of the Tier 2 projects here, highlighted in yellow through that process, moved from high priority to medium priority as part of us trying to balance what was kind of in and outside of the financially constrained plan. Next slide, please. So the bicycle plan identifies existing bicycle facilities as well as the proposed additions to the bicycle network in the form of new bike lanes or shared lanes. The TSP really identifies Ida Street as a corridor that should have, continue to be kind of a shared facility with bicycles and vehicles sharing the road, but formalizing that a little bit with signage about sharing the road and to inform both cyclists that this is a good alternative route to some others, as well as informing vehicles. And we also have that same designation as a shared facility along Third Street, and have identified Third Street really from Water to Whitney as that alternative route to First Avenue, because the TSP does not include a plan to widen First Avenue to include bike lanes. Next slide, please. So the roadway, the motor vehicle plan identifies, has a number of kind of elements from the roadway functional classification map, which I'll talk about, location of new streets, as well as improvements. One of the major changes in the proposed transportation system plan compared to the previous one was removing some of the planned road widens, essentially removing all the planned widens that were to take some of your existing roads up to five lanes, such as Golf Club Road, Shaft Road, Wilco Road. Our kind of updated forecast has really kind of helped show that those widens are not anticipated to be needed, and so we backed all of those down in the TSP to just a future cross-section of three lanes, which is one lane in each direction with a center turn lane primarily on the arterials. We also included some narrowing of travel lanes in the design standards, taking some of the proposed or standard 12-foot lanes down to 11-foot lanes on arterials and 11-foot lanes to 10-foot lanes in neighborhood collectors. This is kind of, a little bit status quo for the transportation industry, which has really found that those reductions have no negative impact to safety, in fact, more frequently have a positive impact on safety and give you back, reduce your previous surface as well as give you some space to help install additional water treatment facilities to help with drainage, which would be necessary as you increase or continue to build sidewalks and upgrade some of your unimproved roadways. Next slide, please. There was only a few changes to the roadway functional classification since our last briefing, and those were up around the future Quail Run extension and the Junko Road extension up in the northwest corner. Just a little bit of kind of discussion on what was going to be a local street versus a neighborhood collector. But those were some of the only new changes, but there was a few changes when I came to the last briefing, namely around Pine Street and Virginia Street to be neighborhood collectors. This map also shows some of the future local street connections in gray, and if you'd go to the next slide, please. This map specifically highlights the future roadway extensions. The roadways in orange are the future collectors. These projects have been included on the project list so that they can be included in the city's system development charge calculations. The blue routes are future neighborhood collectors, which would, similar to the black lines, which are local streets, would be built by development through development, and the local streets and the neighborhood collectors are not kind of in the capital list of projects as they do not need to be included in the city's SDCs to get constructed. All right, next slide, please. The roadway, the vehicle plan of improvements, we have a series of intersection improvements that we talked about at the last meeting, which I'll kind of take you through each of them, kind of what was the final preferred solution. But we've identified in black a number of improvements primarily for safety on Highway 22, but noting that these are outside of the city, but just kind of expressing your, the city's support for safety improvements to Highway 22. And the projects there in orange and pink are primarily, and red, the projects within the city, and that are included in kind of the project list that would move forward to your system development charge calculations. Next slide, please. So those projects there that were kind of shown in pink, orange, and red are all identified in this top table eight. So these are some of the major or most significant roadway projects in the TSP. You'll note that there is a roundabout proposed at the Golf Club Road, Shaft Road intersection, as well as at Stateon Road and Wilco Road, and I have some sketches in here I'll kind of refresh you on. We have the Golf Lane realignment to intersect where Whitney Street is at Cascade, and this project would be primarily if, to serve that Golf Lane area in the event of expansion of the city limits into the urban expansion area at that north end of town. We have improvements to the kind of series of S-curves on the Sixth Avenue, on Sixth Avenue, as well as 10th Avenue, and a minor improvement to the First and Washington intersection near downtown to bring back that protected left turn to get off of First Avenue. And that's recommended as a protected permissive left turn, which is one of the traffic signals where you have both types of left turn. Well, you will at times get a green arrow saying you have a protection to turn left, and at other times, when traffic is light, you would get a flashing yellow arrow indicating you're allowed to turn left if there's no traffic. But that will help alleviate kind of both, but the conversion was trying to alleviate a long time ago, as well as the difficulties you're experiencing there now. And then the bottom four projects are those future collector streets that are included on this list for the purpose of being able to include them in the city's system development charges, so that there could be some credits for those roads to developers as these areas develop. Next slide, please. And so just to kind of go through some of the, those intersection improvements, this is the roundabout at Golf Club Road and Shaft Road, and city staff had a meeting with Marion County staff to kind of review each of these proposals and make sure that we had concurrence there. And we also ran truck turning templates through each of them to identify, kind of clarify and confirm that these can accommodate both the large trucks as well as farm equipment that might use them, or that will use them. Next slide, please. This is the Wilco Road, Stateon Road roundabout, which allows that intersection to be improved for all modes and still keep all five legs of the intersection included in the intersection. Next slide, please. This is the Sixth Avenue S-curves, which you see at the North Street, we're showing an always stop and the South intersection there, a free-flowing turn, much like you have today, except with the kind of removal of the east leg of that intersection, just kind of blocking it off as a local street. Next slide. And this is the 10th Avenue S-curves, where we're kind of emphasizing the free-flowing curve on the southern intersection, making the side street more of a T instead of a little bit ambiguous as to who has the right of way, with the intersection at the north end proposed as a mini roundabout. Next slide, please. So that kind of summarizes all the projects that are in the plan. So we went through an exercise to add up, you know, what is the total of all of the projects in the transportation system plan, and they total approximately $71 million. But we have kind of identified what are the highest priority projects as the high priority list, and those projects that we are considering part of the financially constrained plan. And that plan includes all of the kind of intersection improvements that I talked to you through, as well as all of the Tier 1 projects for bicycle and pedestrian projects. Next slide. So with that, I'm open to kind of any questions or comments before kind of yielding the mic to Darcy to talk to you about some of the implementation items.
Questions, please, go ahead. Somebody, anyone?
Ms. Mayor?
Yes?
First off, it's, I am so impressed by the plan, even more so the second time around. And I have a question, I think it might be more for Keith's on it. I see that big price tag, and I'm curious if there is a portion of like the road tax that we put through, plus the state tax that the governor had put through, that can be used for these improvements, and like how, not how, how much would it impact that cost if it can be used?
There has been discussions with staff about how to fund these projects, and we have also discussed other mechanisms just beyond the gas tax for funding options as well. We have reached out to Marion County. Marion County pleasantly said that they realized this was something they need to be a partner on, what that meant or what that will eventually become, I can't say at this time. So really what we're looking at is opportunities out from the county, from the state, for funding, and then potentially other funding opportunities that we've discussed as well, because the price tags are so significant, I think it's going to be beyond just our normal street tax funding.
I can add a little bit to that. Our kind of summary of how many, how much funds were available for the financially constrained plan to getting to that $14 million, did include both the state gas tax and local gas tax, and assumption of some level of annual grants, as well as SDC funds. But we looked at your current kind of revenues for street projects, where we had a little bit of kind of ambiguity in understanding how much of this could we fund, was in looking at your kind of annual budget for maintenance. And a lot of these pedestrian bicycle projects, you could consider maintenance projects, or might have been things that the city's already been incorporating when they can into some of their maintenance projects, which are primarily pavement preservation, but sometimes those include the enhancement of the sidewalks. So we had to kind of, we, that $14 million budget still is assuming 60% of those funds still going towards just pure maintenance activities, so there is still a little bit of kind of wiggle room, or not wiggle room, but this is still assuming that there might still be some additional maintenance funds that could be used for some of these projects. But you are not alone at all in kind of the portion of the overall TSP that we're able to at this time say is financially constrained. The budget estimates did not assume any contributions from Marion County, which was probably excessively conservative, so that does present some potential additional opportunity.
Somebody else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So on the Shaft Road, you're talking about turning it into, or yeah, turning it into like a three-lane instead of the five-lane. There have been people that have come and expressed safety concerns, like making left turns to their residence. Will this address any of that, or alleviate any of those concerns with safety issues? Or did anyone come to you with any of that?
I did not hear any concerns about not widening that road to five lanes. Now, some of Shaft Road doesn't, I don't believe is fully completed with a center turn lane, so that having a center turn lane throughout the entire length will be a safety benefit and make it a little bit easier to get in and out of people's driveways. I think it also helps control the overall speed of the facility versus a five-lane, as well as the amount of traffic on that facility. Kind of maintaining it as a three-lane facility, people are still encouraged to take, you know, other routes throughout town. We're fortunate to have a pretty nice roadway grid, so widening to five lanes would really only kind of continue to attract kind of more people to that facility instead of, you know, continuing out kind of on their local, more local east-west streets to get out to First or to Wilco, for example, instead of, you know, heading north, because that's the largest facility. So I think, so I hope that we've addressed their concerns.
Certainly, I just, Mr. Mayor, not that I necessarily feel like it should be a five-lane road, I feel like that might encourage people to speed even more so on there, but I just wanted to know if you thought that the three-lane would help with that safety concern, so thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have one more question?
Yes.
So- So when we did our, when we did our previous plan, we anticipated a significantly higher growth than we have now. So what do we do in the event, you know, now we've kind of tapered it down, but what do we do in the event that, you know, we go in the opposite direction? How do we, maybe this is a Dan question, do we have like, do we anticipate any of that or, or not? Or how does that work?
You're asking what if our projections are lower than we expected? Or what if they end up being higher than we expected?
If they're, say that they're lower, yeah, than we expected, if we have more growth?
Yeah, I mean, I think if they're, they're lower, it primarily impacts your ability to fund these improvements if you have lower growth. You have less development to help provide some of the frontage improvements and to contribute SDCs, and then ultimately pay some of the taxes. So you would just not be able to progress as fast at implementing some of the projects. But I think by the nature of us having removed a significant number of the kind of true capacity increasing projects from the, from the plan, it allows the city's kind of SDCs to be more kind of in check with the real needs and responsive to kind of lower or higher growth. The good thing is TSPs do tend to be updated every five to 10 years, so we don't have to not revisit it for another 20 years. It will get, will get revisited. And the city, even on a more frequent basis than that, has some ability to look at their SDCs and see if they're kind of reflective of what the needs are, where you might be able to put more projects in the SDCs than we've estimated if, if, you know, the economy and growth happens, you know, faster than we might have expected. Thank you.
Ma'am, I'm going to be personally interested in, not that I live there or anything, but just a continuing kind of aggravation, and that is, we need to finish the sidewalks on Ida Street. We've got kids going to school and walking literally in the street, because part of it, I need to read this and see what kind of priority you assign to that. It isn't reasonable to want you to go back through those slides. But I'm hoping that got a good look in the, in the planning and thinking. So, that's me.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I would also actually be interested in what you had said about Ida Street.
Yeah. Everyone's got a thought on roundabouts. One of the old relics that I drink coffee with in the morning, whenever we talk about roundabouts, we did this morning, he brings up an incident, he was driving in Paris and got caught in one on the inside lanes and could not get out. And refreshes our memory of the horror of roundabouts anytime anyone even mentions the name or the thing, like, like I did this morning. So there's that out there, too.
I think he's confusing that with centrifugal force, Mr. Mayor.
It could have been.
Yeah, Europe has some very large roundabouts that aren't quite roundabouts, but they're circular, large circular, multi-lane. These are all single lane.
Yeah, right. No, I know.
Very, very clear where to get, get on and get off.
Anyway, thank you.
Yep.
Other thoughts, questions?
Mr. Mayor, an all-out for a thought. I was on this, on the, on the planning, or sorry, on the planning behind this from the, from the start of it. And at first, it was very esoteric for me. I'm like, okay, I'm kind of lost here at the first meeting. But it evolved, and the level of collaboration between the team that was putting it together and the community, they had multiple houses, multiple opportunities for the folks to come and comment on it and identify certain projects. And all that was listened to, heard, and I think the resulting product is fantastic. So let's see how it goes from this point forward. So I appreciate your effort and good job.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one comment. I was a little surprised when they said that this was in our electronic packet, because I was on the electronic packet and I didn't see it in there. So I was just curious if it was in a different version somewhere that I'm not clicking on the website?
It was not part of the packet for the council meeting.
Okay, that's what I thought, I was understanding.
You were sent an email last Tuesday or Wednesday.
I'm still locked out of my email.
Oh, sorry about that.
Yeah.
With a link to the draft TSP and technical memo five, which we'll be talking about next.
Thank you. Totally clarified now.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Darcy's going to come up and talk to you a little bit about the implementation. And I, did the copies I provided go all the way around? I have one extra copy, I'd be happy to leave as well.
All right.
If needed.
That's because I have an extra one already.
Ah.
And so I also brought copies of Level Five.
Okay.
I think I've got like a whole bunch.
Well, traffic, the traffic's terrible. Darcy Rzansky, thank you very much for your time this evening. And I, too, just have a handful of slides. And I'm happy to answer questions as we go through, or if you want to wait till I take a breath and ask questions about some proposed policy and code amendments. So we can go to the first slide there. So basically, at the very basic level, we just want to make sure that your policy framework related to transportation is consistent with your brand-new system plan, and that you have also development requirements that will enable future development to help you, you know, actualize, help you see those improvements to your system as you go forward. So that's what I was charged to do with Dan. And I go to the next slide there. We'll talk about the comprehensive plan first. So the tech memo that you have will, basically, you won't need it once you get your packet for the first evidentiary hearing, because the text will be proposed as a legislative amendment to your comprehensive plan. So that'll be part of Dan's staff report to you. The memo's kind of nice, because it gives you a little bit of background of why we're doing it and what the process was. But ultimately, you'll be, you will have a packet with, with proposed language. So for comp plan, it's Chapter Four, Transportation, and it's really that the language that you see is intended to replace your existing goals, policies, and action items. The goals are the same ones that are in the TSP, but the objectives of the TSP have been modified a little bit to provide more policy-type language, provide a little bit better direction moving forward when you're making land use decisions, for example, and you're asking an applicant to address policy. Those policies are going to make a little bit more sense in your comprehensive plan than looking at the objectives of the TSP. So the TSP objectives basically become now policies and/or action items, again, kind of depending on what the original TSP objective was. Right now, in the memo, the language is not underlined. Again, it's intended to be replaced. We can go to the next slide there. But it wasn't that we completely threw out the existing policies and action items that you have. You had a lot of really good direction, a lot of very good framework for transportation decisions. So some of that was retained, updated a little bit. These are kind of the, some of the newer areas that you didn't have a super strong emphasis on, but that your comprehensive, or that your TSP definitely does. We wanted to match up and bring up-to-date some of those policy statements as well. So we can go to the next slide. The regulatory amendments for your land use and development code, just a handful of tweaks, really. We didn't find a lot to update, which was nice, you have a really solid code, pretty easy to understand. And again, Dan was helpful in identifying some of the areas that could be brought up to snuff. And we really were looking at compliance with the transportation planning rule, which was brought up earlier tonight. So the first, the first kind of bullet there really was just about your development approval procedures, making sure that when you do update your land use code, that it is consistent with the transportation planning rules, a little bit of a crosswalk to, to the state requirements there, just codifying that. You're doing it in practice already, but this just lets everybody know that that's, that's a requirement. Site plan review, approval criteria, you know, making sure when you condition approval that for transportation impacts, that you're conditioning proportionate to the expected impacts of that, that proposal. So again, just good kind of legalistic type language to have in your code. The last two there, pedestrian and bicycle connections. You have a really solid connectivity and circulation standards section already, so requirements for subdivisions, but you didn't really have much by way of making sure there were safe connections for non-motorized transportation. So that's a little bit of additional language. Don't forget about pedestrians trying to make their way through your, through your development site, for example. And then there's a brand-new section that's proposed related to access to transit, and this would be only for new retail office and institutional uses. But again, to accommodate transit as a, as a use, making sure that, you know, building orientation and accessways, crosswalks, et cetera, are there for folks that are using their feet or a bike to get to that transit stop. The next slide. Also, some development standards related to off-street parking. A little bit of proposed reduction or some modification to, to parking lot, or parking space dimensions, when a proposed development would be accommodating things that might necessitate a little less parking, like if they were accommodating a carpool or vanpool space, you might give a little reduction, and your code now allows you to do that, so you don't have to provide quite as many parking spaces as you normally would. If you were proposing something near a bus stop, existing or planned bus stop, and I know transit's a little bit limited, but thinking future, again, you'd be able to permit a little bit of a reduction in off-street, required off-street parking spaces. And then the other two little bullets there really have everything to do with making sure your code is consistent with your street classifications, and also the street cross-section standards that are updated now in your transportation system plan, as well as in your public works design standards. So making sure all three of those documents are consistent and where appropriate, that your development standards are really pointing to your public works design standards, which is where you go for all the measurements. And then the next slide. And this is really just why you want to do these amendments. Again, very modest. If you look at the memo, there are six discrete kind of sections of your development code that are proposed to be updated. You just want to make sure that, that what you're requiring future development to do is consistent with your, with your system, so you don't get developed, land development and your transportation system out of whack. You want them to support each other. And I think that really is all for me. If you have any questions about any of the language that's proposed, be happy to try to answer that, or I will ask Dan.
Okay. Questions, anyone? Neat presentation.
Mr. Mayor, I have one, one question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I am curious about, like, this is a great plan, and I was having a question for Keith, actually. This is not something that our city staff could have ever had the capacity to do based on time and all the other projects that they're working on. Like, I kind of want to emphasize like how important it was for us to have this done, because you guys are all, it seems like you're all so busy with everything else. Because I just, I want the community to know like how important it was that we did this.
Updating the master plans has been, I think, a priority that we've talked about for several years now and beginning, and you'll see in the upcoming budget, another proposal for a master plan update as well. So this has been something we identified as a need, and there is a cost with this, obviously, but, you know, the council putting a priority on this and, and being engaged and active in this is obviously part of the successful process. So this is just one of, you know, the ones we're trying to continue on and check off as we continue to move forward in updating these plans. So it's, it's been a great process.
Awesome, thanks.
And I don't want to begin to imply that we're not busy, but besides the fact that we don't have the time to work on a project like this, staff does not have the technical expertise that the consultants bring, particularly with the traffic forecasting, the traffic engineering, the street design, et cetera. So we do occasionally need to reach out and hire the expertise that we can't have. We don't have traffic engineers on staff.
Thank you for making that point. I think it's important for everyone to know that.
Okay, I guess we're good. And the next step is a public, there's a public present.
Yeah. Next, having not heard a great cue and cry from, from the council tonight, I think we're ready to, to proceed with beginning the adoption process. That starts with required notice to the Department of Land Conservation and Development that, that we are having a post-adoption plan amendment process, and we will do that this week, with the idea that this will, will schedule a public hearing before the Planning Commission at their May meeting, with the idea that we'll be back before you at your second meeting in June for your public hearing and an ordinance for adoption of the TSP, the comprehensive plan amendments, and the land use code amendments that, that Darcy just explained.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Let's go on to ordinance 1031, the new business, amending licensing standards for mobile food units. When you're ready, when you're ready. No, it's all right. I wanted to ask Ralph, he brought most of his planning commission with him tonight, but I don't know.
We had, we had three of the five members of the planning commission here tonight.
Yeah. And I just was kind of sitting here wondering if there was something that Ralph wanted or the group wanted.
No, they were here to, they were invited to hear this presentation.
Wonderful.
Prior, so they wouldn't be going into the public hearing without any background.
Okay. Good. All right. Okay, that next thing is 1031. Mr. Fleischman, you, you're on again.
Thank you. So the issue before you this evening is consideration of an ordinance that would amend the current restrictions in city code on the location of food trucks, formerly known as, in our code, as mobile food units. Last May, the council enacted ordinance 1018 that established the requirement that food trucks obtain a local license from the city, and enacted some standards for the operation of food trucks in the city. As enacted last year, the code requires that food trucks be on private property and not operate or park on the public street, in addition to other regulations. But it is the location of, on the street that we bring before you tonight. As a result of a conversation that we had with the proprietors of Snow Peak Brewery, staff is proposing to amend the standards to allow food trucks to be parked in the street under certain circumstances. We have looked at the, how can we do it safely to not risk the safety of the patrons of food trucks, to not risk congesting traffic flow, et cetera. The police chief and I have worked on these together, and what we are recommending is that food trucks be permitted to set up in the street right away, provided the street is a local. is a local street, not an arterial or collector, as we just discussed about functional classification in the TSP, but not on North Third Avenue, our downtown main street. The food truck must be parked in a legal parking space, which means at least 20 feet from the crosswalk at an intersection, away from a fire hydrant, et cetera. The service window must face the curb, so patrons aren't standing out in the travelway while they order their food. And the food truck must be adjacent to a sidewalk with a minimum width of six feet, so that, again, patrons standing at the order window are not, we don't risk blocking the sidewalk from other pedestrian traffic, or they won't be standing in a grass, or it shouldn't be a grass planting strip, but which soon be worn away. So notice of the proposed amendment was provided to, while my staff report says all licensed food truck operators, we did not have email addresses for all of them, but for all of them that we could contact. Ken Carey, who is the proprietor of the Spud Bus or Loaded Baked Potatoes, whatever his business is called, contacted me by email today saying he had intended to be here tonight to speak on it, about the code amendments, but couldn't make it, and just wanted me to relay his thanks to the city for considering these amendments, and that he would be supportive of them. So with that, staff recommends enactment of ordinance 1031 as presented, and I will, I and/or the chief will answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Questions for either Mr. Fleischman or Chief Stevens?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Why no food trucks on Third Avenue?
North Third.
North Third.
North Third.
My concern was because, the biggest reason is because of visibility, for, because of the narrowness and how close the businesses are to each other, and people getting around and being able to see as they're going around corners and having a food truck that generally they're taller, taller vehicles, you know, vans type UPS vehicle size parked there. The other reason was is because of, just out of consideration of the other businesses downtown, if a food truck comes and parks in front of one of the other businesses that's open downtown, I could see them not being happy that a, somebody parked right there and is blocking the view that their store is there, and having a lineup for people to get food right in front of their business. That was my concern.
Chief, follow-up question on that. Does Third Avenue break north and south at Washington? Is there a south Third Avenue?
No. Anything south of town is south of Water Street. Of like, anything that has a south address is, everything else is north.
Oh, okay.
From Water Street north.
See, I had this odd thing that maybe North Third was north of Washington, and the grade school and whatnot would be interference with food carts. So there's, it's all North Third.
I was told at one time, the reason they blocked, they put the north-south split at Water Street is that the town fathers assumed that the town would go further south than where it is.
With the river, yeah, it's good. Lot of room to grow down there, yeah. Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Chief, I have a question about the North Third Avenue restriction for these food carts. Wouldn't the number two on here where it talks about being parked at least 20 feet from a crosswalk at an intersection fix the visibility issue of going around corners?
Yes, to some extent. I've been down there when there's been UPS or delivery trucks parked down in front of City Hall or in front of the police department, and you come around, you know, just kind of just looking down the street, they're just, it's just, it gives the feeling of a very large blockage, you know, as you're looking down the street, trying to see where you're at and what's there, because of the closeness of the buildings. But it does help.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Would, like, a ti, and I don't know, this is a good idea, it's an idea, would a time limit for how long the food trucks could be parked along the streets assist in that, do you believe, with the issue of, like, visibility or obstructing the view of someone's business, like, so they're not there all day? I don't know. I, I'm just, I'm curious as to why Third Avenue is kind of set out versus, and excluded versus other businesses maybe on Second, or, I don't know. I guess I don't know, I don't understand where you can have a food truck if you can't have it on Third Avenue. Is it just one business you can have a food truck at, then? Like, the Snow Peak place? I don't, I don't get it.
I think there's, be down Second Street, they could have them.
Assuming the sidewalks are wide enough to meet the other criterion, this would provide opportunity for food trucks on, on the side, the east-west side streets, Water, Florence, High.
Marion.
Marion, Burnett, as well as Second Ave. And while I don't see any locating there, a small portion of North Fourth Ave is zoned to allow eating and drinking places.
Mr. Mayor.
The, Third Ave is our, is our main street. It has the heaviest concentration of retail business activity along the street. It has, we, we are likely, as was presented to council a couple of meetings ago, we are likely to lose a number of parking spaces, which will further constrain the availability of parking in the downtown area. And I think part of our thinking also was to, you know, not that we're going to see a line of food trucks parked during the day, but to, to not take up available customer parking with food trucks on Third Ave, our main downtown retail strip, so to speak. That was the other thought that went into it. One possibility, I had the conversation with Mr. Mesa last week, who commented earlier this evening, I have not talked to chief about it, would be perhaps to allow, on Third Ave, perhaps allow them after 4:30 or 5 o'clock. But still, you have the issue of parking for the theater, things like that. So that's, that's, you know, basically why when we were setting out the, what are the parameters for where we want to locate them, we said we probably shouldn't be allowing them on Third Ave.
Chief?
Mr. Mayor, I have another follow-up question.
Another one.
So let's take Marion for, Marion Street for an example. If that's one of, if the sidewalks were wide enough, and they were 20 feet from each intersection, potentially couldn't there be food trucks lined all along Marion, then obstructing the view of those businesses, because they're concentrated there, if they decide to all collect in that area? If each food truck decided they wanted to park on Marion, and whatever business is there now is blocked by food trucks with no parking?
There aren't, there are not businesses that, with their frontage on Marion. I mean, you've got Covered Bridge at the corner.
U.S. Bank.
You've got.
Any other street.
Right, and again, there really isn't. I mean, Ida's got some, some businesses with, that front on Ida, but yes, you have that possibility, but you don't have the, the issue of visibility at the intersections. And again, staying 20 feet back will help resolve that.
Mr. Mayor.
Dan, I have a question regarding Ida Street, right, excuse me, adjacent to Snow Peaks, right? Is that sidewalk then not six feet fitting the width requirement?
First, Snow Peak is on Water Street, not Ida.
Oh, is it Water? I'm looking at the wrong, sorry, I apologize.
Yeah, and that's, the sidewalk there down on Water Street is probably nine feet in width. In front of, in front of the Water Control District, Snow Peak, and the Body Shop.
I'm looking at rumors. Thanks.
Okay. You folks ready to think about this some more, or want to talk about it some more?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I don't think Staton's going to be the destination for any food cut, food truck race on video anytime soon. Having said that, what I mean by that is I don't see this flood of food trucks coming in there and taking up the street. I would like to see what we could do to help these folks a little bit more than just say Third Street's off limits. Maybe the hour thing might be a good situation to look at. Maybe we include in their fee to bid on a portion of the street, or have a couple designated spots for the food trucks, and have them designate to bid on those when they come open. And on the further ends, say, say closer to Water Street and closer to, I don't know, Washington, and first come, bid that week or whatever, gets that one, and then they rotate. I don't know, maybe it rotates. I don't know, something to, I feel like we're just slamming it down and saying, okay, but, except for this street. Since to Mr. Mesa's point, I get what he's saying, at the same time, I don't really think that the government should be regulating how business comes and goes. What essentially he's asking is that we don't let any other person, another business, a food business, park in front of his business, right?
Yeah.
So that's my suggestion, I don't know, just thinking.
Anyone else on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I feel like it just doesn't seem fair to the potential businesses that it could affect, because we're supposed to look at like worst-case scenario. Because I know there, you know, there have been some advertisements out on the internet for, hey, we're going to have all these food trucks coming to Staton, come, come stop by. And yeah, they collect in, I've seen them collect like on a property, kind of, if you go towards SIO, like at the end of, I don't know where that, whether east or west or whatever, but anyway, at the end of, of the city and downtown area. And if we allow them to start, you know, parking on the street, they're going to figure out where they can park and where they can kind of gather the most people, and so it doesn't really seem fair for it to potentially affect even one business worse than another business. It should be fair for all the businesses, and not just restrict one street and protect those businesses from having someone park in front of theirs.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I do think it's kind of vague with the 20-foot restriction, or the six-foot width of restriction, not knowing which sidewalks those are. Do we know exactly which sidewalks those are downtown? I mean, you'd have to go back and look, right?
North Third Ave from Water to Burnett.
Okay.
Has nine-foot sidewalks. And some of, north of Burnett may also have nine-foot sidewalks. The Second Ave from Water, probably also to Burnett, maybe just to Marion, has nine-foot sidewalks. The cross streets, well, the exception to Water is between, I mean, the exception to Second is between Water and Florence, where there's essentially no sidewalk.
Right.
Because it's been that vacant lots there for who knows how long. The east-west side streets, Water's got eight or nine-foot sidewalks. Florence does, Ida does, High does, Marion may not, all the way.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
So to that point, can we, can we ask for, like, specific, I don't know if this is overstepping, so, just let me know, can we ask for, like, it to be either, like, have at your office when they come and ask for permits to say, these are the permitted areas? Because, you know, if they, if someone says, well, I, I think this is a six-foot, you know, sidewalk, and, and we decide it's not, then, you know, we have an issue.
No, it would, excuse me, but it would be very easy to prepare a map showing the permissible locations.
That'd be great. And then, I had another question, I should have written it down. Oh, so when, forgive me, I don't know the process of this, but when someone comes to get a permit, does it last for a specific amount of time? Like, how long are people are going to be able to park in one specific location? Is it just for a day, a time period, overnight?
They, they, they don't get a permit to park in a specific location. They obtain a license to operate within the city, and then need to operate within the locational confines of the code. So while I believe that the license application form has a spot on it to indicate where they're going to set up, but I'm not quite sure that it actually does, because they're not getting a permit or a license for a particular location, it really is, would become an enforcement issue from the enforcement staff, should someone be set up in the wrong location or be operating without a license. The license is good for one year.
Okay. Chief Stevens? You had a question, I hope, I guess.
It was a comment, it was an option to try. Since the, the parking on Third is, is, with the 20-foot rule, the biggest issue is blocking of, of other businesses, that you could try it and see how it goes, knowing that you may have to come back and, and narrow it down if we get too many complaints.
You could bring a map, potentially, too, that would illustrate where they could park without conditions.
Yeah.
The council seems to be, I don't want to put words anywhere, seems to be thinking about maybe, does this need, with all respect to the work you guys have already done, does this need more thinking? You folks, go ahead. Somebody had a question, or you had a question.
Mr. Mayor, I was actually going to ask if we could possibly see a map of current permissible locations prior to making a decision, so we can make a better informed decision on what the impact would be.
If the council liked to table this, and then have us come back with more information, and kind of take the comments we got, and have, you know, a map what it's going to look like, and I think Dan did a nice job of trying, just to explain where the areas would be, and to give a better visual guide than, than, you know, trying to do it mentally or on the phone.
Yeah, thank you.
Someone like to offer, motion to table?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just had another thought, though. What are your thoughts on having like a, a time restriction, or a, to Council Hook's point of so many gathering in one specific spot, or do we care about that until we see the map?
I think, just, I don't want to talk out of turn here, I think we bring the map back like we suggested. Verbally, and I'm looking at this again, and speaking to my counterpart over here that doesn't talk very much, I think verbally, there's enough options, right? Now we put it on a piece of paper to look at it, and that gives us a better clarity as to what we're looking at from a higher level.
Yeah.
I don't want to speak for you, but that's what I think, so.
Go ahead, Chris. Say something.
Agreed.
Okay, so.
Man of many words.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like the direct staff to bring this back with a map that shows us the current locations there were, this would impact.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
We'll be back with a map.
Thank you.
That shows where. That shows where food trucks may be located, should Ordinance 1031 pass as currently drafted.
Can you include Third Avenue, just to see, just for giggles?
Sure.
Okay.
Can we do that, just without some formal, just a directive back to staff?
Done.
On this? Okay, thank you. All right, good.
Thank you.
Okay. State and city council rules update. Ms. Angelo and Mr. Campbell, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to start, preface this by, the agenda does say action, this, we're not asking for action tonight, it's just informational, so, no decision tonight. In your packet, you have a lot of information, but we wanted to be sure that you had everything that we considered when putting these council rules together. On January 22nd, Councilor Quigley requested a review of the council rules, and I began to do a little bit of research. I reached out to my network of city recorders, and asked for all of their council rules. I heard back from 18 different cities, and what I decided to do was, one of my counterparts in the city of Tuolatin, she emailed me back and said, you know, we use the League of Oregon Cities Council Rules model, and we just did ours last year. It was a lot of work, but it was a good guideline to follow. And as I started pulling up the council rule best practices from the league, and looking at Tuolatins, I thought, they really, it, it's a great outline to follow, and I like Tuolatins, because I, it's a real-world example of the council rules in place. And so, that's, that's why you have all those documents. And Keith and I sat down, and we worked through everything, and tried to stick in where our council rules, maybe it was missed in Tuolatins, and it's special to Staton, and we tried to, to just incorporate it all, and follow those best practices. So, I, we're, we're hoping that you guys take some time to review it. If you have questions, don't hesitate to reach out and email us. And I think the next steps will be, once, once you've had a chance to review, if you want to have a work session, or if you're ready to bring it back before the council. So, we can answer any questions.
Lots of comments at this time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I was, I did read through all of this, actually, and I loved Tuolatins, and one of the things that I saw that was kind of suggested in the agendas area, was that it should be only, no less than three days, it should be distributed to the council no less than three days. For me, I feel like that's just not enough time for 162 pages to read. I have a full-time job, and it's a volunteer position, and I love doing it, but I need more time to digest everything.
Okay.
Would five days be more reasonable for you guys, or is that too much to burden staff with? Because I was actually thinking the same thing.
Yeah, I mean, the, the challenge become trying to have the time to get through and get the agendas put together, five days you're looking at, it would be out by Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the challenges can become doing that. I mean, I think it's definitely something we can, we can look towards, you know, four days, I think Thursday's normally about the soonest for something in advance, and you can see, but five days is what we need to do. I mean, obviously, staff can work to try to make that happen, if that becomes, becomes more important. I would say it'd be by the end of that fifth day, so by Wednesday, by five, that should be out, would be what the goal would be.
That would be amazing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I'm not alone in this with, with Councilor Hook. Is anyone else interested in getting this a little bit earlier, so they have more time to review it, or?
I don't know that it's the, the delivery of the packet, I think it's the content of the packet. So, say we had things on, there were just a couple things we could get done in.
Right.
I think if we could figure out a way to...
Early review portions of it, or something?
Yeah, or some, or even when we're setting the agenda, if we could figure out a way to say, oh, this is the potential to be all night, based on what it is. Because I think we need to condense it a little bit more, I think, on some of the, some of the long meetings. I don't know, that's just my thought. But there's, I mean, what you did here, I agree, I agree with you, I read that most of it, too, and it's like, wow, there's a lot of thorough stuff here, you did a really thorough job, so, it's going to take us a while to digest this, and really piece it together, and say, yeah, this fits, or maybe tweak this, so.
It was great to have the information, like, so appreciative.
I appreciated the notes on the side, too, kind of where things were coming from. I found that especially helpful, so thank you for including that.
Yeah, I like the recess part.
Very well done.
Recession part. All right. Anything else on that? Okay, so, let's move along, there are no staff or commission reports tonight. Any comments from the public? Another, another chance to share with us.
Dylan Bray.
Business from the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder that next Monday, the 22nd, at, April 22nd, at 6:00 PM at the library, there is a town hall the city is co-hosting with the Main Street Group, and Sherry Stewart will be here to give a presentation, so everyone's welcome to attend. And I wanted to give Janet a chance to talk about the library book sale as well.
Okay.
I, last week was the library, the Friends of the Library spring sale. They had the best sale they've ever had, so I want to thank the community, and you guys, too, who came out and supported the Friends. During their sale, they made more than $5,000, which is pretty incredible.
That's amazing, yeah.
Thank you, and thank you to them for all their hard work.
And if I may, I'd like to remind the council and members of the audience that this Thursday night at the library at 6:30 is our open house on the economic development strategies.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing else.
Economic development strategy, that's Thursday night?
Thursday night at the, in the library meeting room.
Six, 6:30, you said?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yes?
Can we confirm that our, no, am I looking at the wrong one? So our budget meeting on May 6th is at 6:00 PM, not our normal 7:00 PM?
Right, it's at 6:00 PM, it's a special call.
Okay.
And the first meeting will just be passing out the budget, so.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they don't come an hour late.
Okay. All right. I don't have anything else this evening. Future business from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'm going to put Emily on the spot for a minute. Emily, can you tell us about cleaning the canal yesterday, I think it was, was it Sunday?
Saturday.
Saturday?
Do you need to go?
Yeah, can you come tell us, I just wanted to give us an update on how you guys, how successful you're there, and what role?
All right, so, RDS hosted a downtown waterway cleanup on Saturday. Kind of impromptu, we just all realized that the water was pretty low, and there was quite a bit of trash, so we figured we can gather a few people up on Facebook, and, you know, pick up some trash. We ended up getting a couple of extra volunteers, high school students needing some hours, and gathered, did you count how many bags of trash?
There were at least five.
There was at least five bags of trash, and a couple of very adventurous people actually got into the waterway and got, you know, a couple of the big pieces out, so, you know.
Okay, nice. Where did you guys go from, start to end?
It was pretty much the RDS area, so we went from First to Third Water, to Washington, and all, um, or, how many people were there? Yeah, 10 of us, took about hour and a half.
Okay. What was the oddest thing you found?
Oddest thing we found, let's see, a couple of tins of cookies that looked like they were several years old, advertisement for a, one of the bazaars from the Holiday Times.
Okay.
That was in there.
Nice.
But yeah.
All right, well, good job.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Emily. Let's see, anything else from the council? Future agenda items, May 6th, Budget Committee meeting, I think that's been mentioned, 6:00 PM. And if there's nothing else, it's 20 minutes to 9:00, let's go home.